It is 5:31 on Monday, May 2nd, and I call this meeting to order. The first issue on our agenda is our city updates, so Ms. Solano, take it away.
Counselor, I'm gonna start the city updates tonight, and then I'll turn it over to Ms. Solano. I think you should have at your place a copy of the draft of the ordinance and a background paper for the ordinance amending the legislative procedures and rules.
Hey, Mayor.
City Council regarding.
We do not have it.
You don't have it, okay?
I am excusing Counselor Graham.
So you recall that we started this discussion a couple of weeks ago. We presented you with the draft, I think, last week, and that following some discussions from City Council, some changes were requested to be made, so we've tried to incorporate those changes here. But also, I want to direct your attention to basically the ordinance. And the first page of the ordinance basically is the background information, the authority for that, says why we need this legislative rule, why we have this legislative rule. There's some, you know, confusion, or there could be some confusion, but in view of the inconsistencies, if you will, over the last couple of months, we thought it would be good to put this in writing in the City Council's legislative rules and regulations, so that the procedures are set forth when a counselor has a conflict of interest or a perceived conflict of interest. And so you'll see that the draft ordinance now, our intent is to put this on the agenda for the council on the 9th of May. Certainly, you can amend it if there's anything that you think should be changed from that. But I think it's important for everybody on the City Council to understand that these are designed for your protection, that these conflict of interest rules are designed for your protection, so that nobody can make a claim that you unlawfully participated in a decision where you had a conflict of interest, or that you failed to vote at a meeting where you were present, in which case, under the charter, you forfeit your seat automatically. So these are designed for your protection. That being said, nobody, not me, not any other member of City Council, not the City Attorney, can make you recuse yourself, or leave the room, or make you not participate in a discussion. Whether you choose to do that is up to you individually. And as long as you're willing to suffer whatever consequences might arise from that decision, the decision about whether you want to declare a conflict at all, or participate in the discussion, or participate in the vote, is up to you. Nobody can make you do anything that you don't want to do. And I just want to make sure that everybody understands that as we move forward. These rules should be set forth. They should clarify whatever confusion there was, if there was confusion about this. And I know the history has been that you have to leave the room. This doesn't say you have to leave the room for the discussion, it says you have to leave the dais. If you want to change it to leave the room, the way it's always been, I think that's up to you. But I think it's just important we get those rules set up, so that it's clear to the counselors, these are what the rules are, you can obey them or not at your peril. So I just wanted to give you that quick update, and now I'll turn it over to Ms. Solano.
Mr. Mayor, on Section 1, Number 8, Voting, on Item 4, it says such counselor shall be allowed to remain in the council chamber, but shall not be allowed to address counsel. And then on Voting, on Number 5, Voting, it says shall be excused from the chamber. And then on Number 3, it says again that they shall be excused from the chamber. So I think what, I would prefer that we, if I had a conflict of interest, that I leave the room. That's been kind of the manner in which we do things, I would prefer that. But I think they're in conflict there, if we could.
Well, during the discussion, as long as there's not gonna be a vote, if there's gonna be a vote, our judgment is that if you remain in the chambers, you subject yourself to being accused of violating the city charter, since you're actually present in the chambers, but you didn't vote, even though you have a conflict. That's why I think the practice has been you should leave the room if there's voting taking place. With respect, if there's no voting taking place, there's no reason why legally you should have to leave the room. I think it's more appropriate, the conservative approach is to leave the room, even if it's just during discussion. But if it's just during discussion, no vote's gonna take place.
So during the discussion phase, they could stay in the room, but as soon as we're gonna vote, they have to get up and leave? Or I would have to get up and leave?
I agree with the mayor. We had this unwritten rule that during discussion and voting, you left. And this is another option for counsel. Counsel could say during discussion and voting, you really should leave the room and then return. This is a compromise saying that during discussion, you should leave the dais, but you're allowed to remain in the room until the discussion is over. These are your rules. You can choose not to adopt this rule.
I could see, during discussion, I could see any person sitting out there in the audience, and by virtue of gestures where they didn't agree with something, or, oh my God, they said, you know, they could really influence people appearing on the dais. So I would prefer that even during discussion. And that's just me. I agree with the mayor.
These are your rules, these are your rules, we'll do what you tell us to do.
Counselor Flores.
Can you, can you tell us why we need this in our municipal code? When, I always thought that Colorado, you know, the revised statute would supersede anything that we do. Are we expanding beyond that?
No.
Why can't we just live with the Colorado revised statute?
If you turn to the first part of the ordinance, the mayor has set forth the current rules. So we start with the municipal code, okay?
So this is just a, this is just a history lesson here.
Yeah, yeah, so this is the law as it currently is.
Okay.
So the law currently says you shall not vote and shall refrain from attempting to influence, all right? The second section is what you referred to, Colorado revised statutes. It's basically the same rule. The third is an advisory opinion from the Independent Ethics Commission. And they have taken the position that you should not only not vote, you should avoid voting or debating questions. And then we have the charter. It says failure to vote by a council member when present shall result in a vacancy, the office to be forfeited immediately. Back in 1954, the city fathers said, we don't want any abstentions. We don't want you to vote present, or say I abstained. Every council member must vote. So that is why that's been there for all these years. What the mayor's tried to do is take the unwritten rule and reduce it to writing, so that if it becomes a legislative rule, one council member can say to another, according to our legislative rules, you should do the following, or not do the following. So the first section is the current law, and then if you read the charter, if you read the municipal code, if you read the state statute, it says don't vote and don't try to influence, as two basic principles. But it doesn't tell you what do you do during a meeting. That's where this, what should you do or not do during a meeting? And so that's, that's what the mayor's proposing, is here are the rules during the meeting when there's a conflict of interest.
And apparently, there's some desire by members, or certain members of City Council, even if they have a conflict of interest, to remain in the room when the matter is discussed. So if that's the case, this will accommodate that as long as the vote's not taking place. Now, if the council, if there are other members of council say that, we think it's best to be conservative, and you should leave the room, and shouldn't even be present during the discussion, then that should be changed here, but that's where we were coming from, okay?
Counselor Maestri.
Well, I think a clear definition of the existing rules and statutes should have been made clear, and it should have been consistently, we're new. So we, Mr. Kogosik has been appointed to advise counsel, and so he should have advised counsel from the very first time that we had a conflict of interest on how this was supposed to run. Now, you're saying back to us that we're, you know, we've created this problem. We didn't create this problem, this is a confusion, and all we want is clear clarification. And I'm sure that everyone here on council is willing to abide by even the current statutes. And so there's no reason to inflict things upon us if all we need to know is what that clear definition is and abide by it.
So that's what this tries to do.
No, you're asking us to add to that. All we need was clear direction on, from the get-go, from the very first time that we've come up as a new council, and rather than, rather than have like myself and Mr. Ortega be present at our first conflict of interest, whatever that was, of ethics complaint, we should have been advised on how that was to take place. We're new to council, he is appointed to direct us, and that's all we needed, was clear direction. And every, every time that we've had either a conflict of interest, or anything where we need to recuse ourselves, we just need clear direction.
I agree with that.
Okay.
And I apologize for that. It should have passed six to nothing, rather than seven to nothing.
Correct.
Yeah.
And so we're not, we're not, no one.
So that's clear, that's clear, and that's my mistake. What is not clear, or other conflicts of interest, that one is clear, black and white, okay? Other than that, we don't know what personal interest a council member may have in a contract, or a resolution, or an ordinance. I'm not in a position to know that. I should have asked, asked, when we dismissed the complaint, because it really was.
A frivolous complaint, both complaints were frivolous. And I should have said, I'm sorry, but we're gonna have to vote twice on this. It was really a direction, it wasn't a resolution, it wasn't an ordinance. But I should have said, we're gonna have to vote separately, and Counselor Maestri's gonna have to leave temporarily, and Counselor Martinez Ortega is gonna have to leave temporarily while we vote how to handle these complaints, that's my error, I agree with you.
Now, let me ask you this, when council leaves the dais, you, what you're saying in here is that because they are present, and they don't vote, just because they're present in the room, is that the clarification that you're looking for means that they should vacate their seat immediately, because they didn't participate in the vote? Is that what you're trying to say?
The charter says that if you're present, you have to vote. And if you fail to vote, you forfeit your seat immediately.
So do they consider leaving the dais, leaving the meeting? Or are you saying leaving the room? Or there isn't a clear clarification, but when we're voting, we vote from this dais, we don't vote from that audience?
Yeah, well, but you're present in the room.
Well, I think the mayor is trying to draw a distinction between discussion and debate and voting.
Between work sessions, basically.
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah, so when there's a vote, you should leave the room. That's what the mayor's recommending, when there's discussion. An option the mayor has said, because there is no vote, you can be in the room and observe the meeting.
Counselor Warner.
Just to clarify, we voted for Counselor Ortega and Counselor Maestri separately. That wasn't combined, so there were two 7-0 votes on that, just to clarify that.
Yeah, I'll have to check, I think you're right.
Yeah.
And it should have been six to zero, rather than seven to zero.
But we did vote twice separately, it wasn't packaged together, it wasn't a package deal.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify that. Also, the difference is, is that it's a public meeting, and nobody should be kicked out of a public meeting. If you're not on the dais, you're in the public, they're two separate things. I disagree with Larry, we've had plenty of heated public here that are basically trying to intimidate us on several different occasions. And that's just what happens at public meetings, so I totally disagree with that, sorry, Larry.
Yeah, but that's a lot different than each one of us trying to influence the other. The public has all the right in the world to say whatever they're gonna say to us. We shouldn't try, there's a wink and a nod out there. And somebody who has a friend on the council knows, no, don't, you know, I don't vote that way. You know, that's influencing, I think they ought to be gone, that's just me. I'll abide by whatever, but that's just me, I don't, you know. And, by the way, ignorance of the law is no excuse. First day I got on City Council, I read the Pueblo Municipal Code, and upside down and backwards, I suggest that you guys do the same.
Counselor Flores.
Yeah, I wanted to say that the influence that we get from the audience and the City Council are two different things. We get to vote, they don't get to vote, so that's really important. But I think what you're really trying to relate tonight to us, Mayor, is that nobody knows but the individual whether or not you have a conflict of interest. And it's really our responsibility to acknowledge that we do, and do the right thing, because you guys aren't gonna get in trouble, the other six are not gonna get in trouble, it's you. It's upon you personally that you can face a lot of trouble for that. You know, I was interested, when you, when you look at the Pueblo Municipal Code, it uses the word family. Is there a definition of that? I mean, how far out does that go? Is it just to your immediate family?
It, the only definition is in the Ethics Code. And it's, it's very broad. It says it includes any person related by blood, marriage, step, or adoption, which includes parents, spouse, children, brothers, sisters, nephews, nieces, aunts, uncles, first cousins, grandparents, and grandchildren. Even if you get divorced. A divorce or separation between spouses shall not be deemed to terminate the relationships described herein. That is, to me, too broad, I mean, that's... When you're talking about aunts and uncles and nieces and cousins, this, that's half the town. I mean, so you, but that's the only definition that's in the municipal code. Now, the section, "family," that's at the beginning of this 197, means, says, a member of City Council, who or whose family? That's not defined, and maybe we should clean that up and say it doesn't include cousins. I mean, I, I have second cousins that I've never met, so I don't know. But here, it's limited to first cousins. And now we have blended families, we have divorce and remarriage, and people are living a lot longer, so it's very broad.
Anyway. So it sounds like the question on the table, then, Mayor and Mr. Kogosik, is to get guidance on if you want counselors to remain in the room during work session, or if you want them to vacate during work session, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, I think that's a decision that council will have to make, either.
Well, work session, you never vote during.
We don't have a vote during work session.
Right.
So it doesn't have anything to do with work session, unless you're, unless, I guess, during discussion, then you probably should leave during the debate section, or at least go to the, to the, to the public seating.
I, I think. I'm sorry.
There's no vote in work session, so I don't think that's what we're getting at. I think what we're getting at is, do we want this on, on the agenda Monday?
Yeah, that's one, but.
Okay.
A complaint has been made against Counselor Sarah Martinez, that she was present during the work session when the Health Department made a presentation asking for premium pay. There was no discussion, no debate, but there was criticism that she was present when that matter was mentioned in a work session, so I'm afraid it does carry over into work session.
Well, I guess it does, but we were talking about voting, so I think that's what, you know, if you're, if we're voting, then you don't, then you don't need to leave, but, I don't know. I guess I don't know what we're talking about. I mean, I'm kind of in line here with Counselor Maestri, is, you know, clearly, we have, we have problems when there's conflict of interest. I mean, the very first complaint we had that was an ethics complaint, that was settled between the president of City Council at that time, which was Counselor Flores, and the mayor, and Mr. Kogosik. And the rest of the council didn't hear anything about it until it was in the news, until it was on television. The second one we had was an ethics complaint, which was against the mayor again, and that had to do with possibly influencing a vote by saying that, that if debrusing didn't pass, then we couldn't pay the nonprofits, which was not the case. But anyway, in that case, you were present, sitting there, and exchanging, or participating in the debate, and you were allowed into a private session. The third and fourth were two council members that never left the dais, that voted for their own dismissal. So I, I'm kind of with Counselor Maestri, this should have been directed by council. I mean, you know, to throw it all on us, I mean, you're sitting there trying to, I mean, it seems that if you're representing council, I mean, don't you represent council? I mean, I've received emails.
You're asking me a question?
I'm asking you a question, you say that you represent council. So it seems to me that that should have been directed from you.
Let me address each of your points, if I may. The first was an ethics complaint made against the mayor. And we followed the municipal code to a T. And what the municipal code, which was later changed, but at the time, the municipal code said it was handled by the president of City Council. So we complied with the municipal code.
It's my understanding that was changed when we had a new mayor. So it wasn't, I don't think, we didn't vote on.
That's not correct. It was changed after President Flores.
I don't recall voting on, voting on anything like that.
Yeah, I can, I'd be happy to.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to see that.
Satisfaction by council members about the way that was handled, that it shouldn't be just the responsibility of the president of City Council, it should go to the entire council. And so we amended that section of the municipal code to say that it goes to the entire council. So with respect to the mayor's first ethical complaint, we complied with the municipal code to the letter.
Okay.
Okay.
I want to comment here, because I was present at that time, president, and it was clear that I followed everything in the municipal code to a T. And after I made a judgment, because that was my responsibility, the rest of the council didn't like it. And the reason that it was the old way is that they did not want to make it a political situation. And by now, all of us voting, I still believe that that was wrong. I voted against it, I think the vote was six to one. They did not like the fact that I did my job, and that I did it correctly, and that I followed municipal code. Everybody wanted to vote now, and I think that's a huge, I'd like to see it go back, because now you bring politics into the situation with people that want to get you. And I still think that's wrong, and, but that's the new rule now, going forward.
Mr. Kogosik, Mr. Mayor, can you please clarify what the specific direction that you need regarding?
Well, I'd like to, but let me just address the points that were made by Counselor Winner, if I can. The second complaint was during the second ethics complaint against the mayor, the mayor was present. The mayor does not have a conflict of interest, because he doesn't vote, only you vote, okay? With respect to the executive session, the legislative rules say the mayor has the right to be present during any executive session. So we complied in all cases with the legislative rules and with the municipal code. In terms of direction, Madam Chair, the mayor's made a recommendation, which he thinks expresses the will of council. If he's wrong, then please feel free to change it. But this is his reading of the direction that council has given him. And I think we really need to take that unwritten rule and write it down.
So the ordinance, the revised ordinance on the table, then, are we okay voting on it next Monday? Counselor Winner?
A little bit first reading.
First reading.
Yeah.
Thank you, Counselor Atentio.
Nobody else wants to change the, change it to, they have to leave the room?
Counselor Winner?
No.
But they do have to leave, we're gonna have a vote.
Right.
Right? They can stay for the discussion, but they have to leave. Now, since nobody, future council members won't read the
Well, if you're not on the dais.
They will know, they will know to leave the room when, when the vote happens. Or will they, will they need direction from?
When they're, when...
That table. Okay, okay, we're gonna vote now.
Doesn't make sense to me that we need direction from the, uh, city attorney for every little thing. Just make it clear.
He does represent us. He represents us as our attorney. But, but there's a difference between the dais and, and being in the public.
I understand.
So I don't think you need to leave the room at all. It's a, that's, you're in the public.
But it says they have to leave the room when they vote.
Well, I don't think that's in the spirit of the law, but if, if that's what it says, that's what it says. And that's the charter or is that an ordinance?
City Charter, it's in the Charter section.
It's in the Charter, so we can't change that without a, without a vote from the public.
Counselor Flores?
I, I just wanted clarification. Uh, the section dealing with shall refrain, refrain from attempting, attempting to influence, that could occur in a work session situation. And so the fact that you're not going to vote, I think, you know, I, I think we need to clarify that, that in both cases, they should not be in the, in the, in the room. Not only the case of being...
Well, yeah, I, 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 the way I read what the mayor's drafted is that during work session and when there's not a vote, the person with the conflict should leave the dais and sit in the, um, in the, um, church pew. So I, yeah, I, I, that's the way it's written, if that's the way you want it.
And I think it's important for everybody to recognize that this doesn't just apply to meetings. So if you have a conflict of interest in the matter, uh, you can't get on the phone and talk to the other councilors one-on-one and trying to persuade them to do something. Hopefully, that goes, hopefully that goes without saying. But maybe it needs to be said that that's not allowed either.
Counselor Flores, did you get your answer question?
Yes, sir.
Or a question answered, uh, Counselor Maestri?
Um, so part of this is to, you know, eliminate influence by council members for the vote?
When they have a conflict of interest, yes.
Okay, so why wouldn't that apply to you? Because if you're sitting in your own ethics complaint and even though we're the ones voting on it
I don't have a vote.
You don't have a vote, but how do we know we're not? Mr. Atentio says it's a possibility that the person that the complaint is about can be shaking their head and winking their eye in the room towards trying to influence the vote. So why don't we just make it fair all the way around? Oh, of course. Oh, oh, and if you, if it's not mayor?
Yes.
And if you're not making phone call, if we're not to make phone calls to influence vote, I won't expect a phone call like that from you again, like over the metro district.
I had a conflict of interest in the metro district?
No, your phone call to me was a conflict of interest.
Why was that?
Because you were trying to influence the vote. You told me how disappointed you were in me for not voting in your favor. You did. Did you not?
Of course I did.
Okay, there you go.
And I did not have a conflict of interest in that matter.
That was before I voted.
I've done that with everybody. I mean, that's how, that's how things happen.
It's influencing the vote, period.
And there's nothing wrong with that unless you have a conflict of interest.
Well, you did have a conflict of interest because I wasn't voting for it. I had said that before.
I think what the mayor's saying is it would be different if he owned stock or some type of financial, you know, was gonna get financial gains from the water deal. Uh, Mr. Kogosik, I, I am in favor of, um, cleaning up the family language. I don't think that it needs to be on this specific, you know, change, but I think...
I can make that change. Mr. Freeman's gonna talk about the Ethics Code. That is, to me, too broad. We're talking now about a legislative rule and the word "family" is not defined. So I'd be happy to add a definition.
I would appreciate that.
Okay, but you need to tell me since it's council rule, definition should be obviously a spouse or domestic partner. And then you're going up and down the generational ladder. How, how far do you want to go? Is it parents? Children? Is it grandparents? Grandchildren? You want to leave it at that? I don't know. It's, it's, it's not clear.
Isn't there, isn't there a term called, uh, immediate family? That might be the, there is a definition of immediate family.
Not, not in, we don't, we haven't defined.
State statute has a definition problem.
So I, what I can do is, uh, attempt to define immediate family and, uh, send it to the mayor to be sent to you. But that would just be for the legislative rule. Later, if, if you want to take a look at the Ethics Code and limit the definition of family to immediate family, I'm, I'm also happy to do that. So immediate family, even then, the definitions aren't uniform. So what I hear you saying is spouse, domestic partner, and, and you go up as high as, as, uh, grandparents and down as low as, as grandchildren, but that's it. Is that correct? What about brothers and sisters? What about in-laws?
Immediate family.
That's immediate family.
Immediate family starts at first cousin. So I mean, it's... Okay, so in-laws and, all right. Cause I, I'll, I'll read it. It says, uh, spouse, parents, step-parents, foster-parents, father-in-law, step-children. Foster children. I think that's probably our definition now. And where did you, where do you see that? It's, I just brought it up. Definition of immediate family. It's defined. Wow. All the way down to first cousins. Pardon me?
Was it off Google?
Yeah.
It's off Google, Mr. Kogosik.
It's, uh, it's a law degree, I mean, the, uh, law department at Cornell University. Thank you.
So Monday for first reading, I'm, I, I'm okay to move forward, Mr. Counselor Atentio? Is shaking or is nodding his head? Counselor Martinez Rortega is yes. So what other city updates are there?
Al, Ms. Lo.
Thank you, Madam Chair and City Council and Mayor Gattisar. I have a couple of, of city updates. And the first is the quick, um, update on the COVID count for the past week. A case count of fifty-three point four, slightly up from last week of fifty-two point eight. And the one-week positivity rate is two point three rather than two point two one, one week ago. Um, there is however, a decrease in the, in the days of stabilized hospitalization. It was reduced to eleven where it was at thirteen before. So, um, there's a sense that there's a few more patients in the hospital. I do not have actual COVID count. You know, we don't meet any longer on the, on the every Monday afternoon at four o'clock meeting. So I, I don't get that information, um, from, uh, the Public Department of Public Health. Um, that is the COVID update. I do have an ARPA update that there are no changes to the, to the running balance at all of any ARPA resolution or contract amendments or ordinance. They're, they are on, as they were last week in the first reading and they will appear in second reading here next week with only new, um, first reading as the library, um, amount. And, uh, Mr., uh, the, our city attorney is working with the library district on that first reading. Uh, but I do have a, an update on the reporting. Um, the, the first quarter report to the Treasury from January through March was due on the last date of, of April, which would have been, um, Saturday, I think was the thirtieth. Um, our finance department submitted it on Thursday, April twenty-eighth with this additional information. The Treasury required, uh, that the city and municipalities, uh, calculate their lost revenue, um, calculation for the year of twenty twenty twenty-one. And, um, our finance office made that calculation and there was not lost revenue as a result of the calculation. So applying the Treasury, um, rules, uh, which allowed municipalities to select a ten million dollar amount of lost revenue, the mayor's direction to finance into Anna was to select the ten million dollars as the lost revenue calculation for the city of Pueblo, which would provide the city, um, an additional five hundred and ninety thousand, six hundred and ninety-six from the, what we reported a year ago as lost revenue of the nine point four hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and four dollars. So that is another allocation of our total. It's not an additional amount. It's just the allocation of our thirty-six point seven million. It will be ten million that is allocated to lost revenue, uh, which will be used for governmental services. And then that, then that you have passed a list of a few items already um, in that list, uh, through a resolution. And they'll be back with, um, ordinances and contracts, um, on a, on a case-by-case basis. So that is the update on the first quarter, um, reporting. I do want, I do want to stop a minute also on, and to note, the city was selected, um, by the Bloomberg Center for Public Innovation and John Hopkins University to participate in the twenty twenty-two innovation training program. And it will come with, um, technical assistance for a team of, I think there are ten or eleven of us in the city who are participating in a, a challenge within the community, outreach to stakeholders, a literature review, research review. And, um, our, we have begun, uh, we've begun, uh, participating uh, with twenty-eight other cities in the cohort throughout the world. And so there are cities like Limerick, Ireland and Rio de Janeiro, Brazil, um, Quebec's a city in Quebec and, uh, Warsaw, Poland. And I think the rest are in the United States. But so out of twenty-eight, I would, I would think we might be one of those smaller sizes of the cities that we're working with in the cohort. Uh, more, um, uh, more reporting and a full work session disclosure as we get rolling with some progress towards, um, a learning more on, on our challenge in the city. Also in April, the city was recognized, uh, an award by the, the Colorado Downtown Association. This is the Colorado Downtown Excellent Winner uh, for Best Partnership on the work with the Levy Project. And the Chamber had made the nomination for the city, uh, to receive that award. Um, so that kudos to the, to basically planning and, and Parks and Rec and all of the other stakeholders that worked on that Levy Project. That was a nice, uh, award and recognition. Um, and that does conclude the city's updates. Do you have any questions or directions for me?
Thank you, Ms. Solano. What questions are there for council? Counselor Flores?
I don't have a question and I don't know whether you can answer the mayor. And that is the suggestion that we should have a forensic audit. Did we come to some conclusion on that? Uh, cause I was vehemently opposed to it and I'm just wondering, uh, where we are with that.
Well, I think that's the council, that's the decision that council have to make. We've prepared a draft agenda and there's a draft agenda there for the President of the City Council to select an auditing firm and define for them what the parameters of the audit are. So we haven't made any efforts to go outside. That's gonna be on the council if they decide they want to proceed in that fashion. I agree with you. I think it's a terrible idea, but that's, that's a council's decision. So so you'll see a resolution on the May eighth agenda. Authorize the President of the Council to, um, retain the services of, uh, CPA. Now they'll identify them, they'll have to come back and that'll have to be a contract done by ordinance. So if there's five votes to do that, that ordinance will pass, uh, over the mayor's veto. But, um, that's where that's at.
Uh, any other questions from council? Ms. Solano? Sorry, Counselor Winner? Okay. Um, sorry about that. Ms. Solano, for the extra, uh, revenue projects, I know that we at one point saw like a huge list from the city department heads about like different projects that the city could do with the lost revenue ARPA funds. Will then the prioritization look like you're going down further on the list? Or will there be other projects included in that list that we haven't viewed yet?
Yeah, I think we, uh, we, um, allocated all but about three million dollars of that. What we thought would be nine point four million dollars at first. We're holding that three million dollars back in reserve. And so we still are holding it back in reserve at this point. We expect we'll get the second tranche in May and then we're gonna move forward and determine what that should be used for, what the second tranche should be used for as well. We've had lots of demands, lots of requests. Public County has asked for our assistance in installing part of the sewer system that's gonna be necessary to accommodate the Public County Jail. So that's something that we're reviewing at least, and we expect, at least I expect, and I'll make a recommendation to Public Count, to the city council, that we participate in that project to some degree. What degree yet? Haven't decided yet. But you'll see something come from us that part of that money ought to be used to assist Public County pay for the sewer system that otherwise would be their sole responsibility. So.
And so it sounds like the remaining of the lost revenue funds in the tranche two funds have yet to be appropriated? Or like determined up like what?
Two funds are not yet appropriate at all.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, Counselor Winner?
The tranche two funds were appropriated at one time when all of the ARPA funds were appropriated at thirty-six point seven million. And that was through one ordinance.
But we haven't allocated.
Not at all.
No.
Done, no allocation.
Sorry.
No, you're good. Thanks, Mayor. Uh, Counselor Winner?
So I thought I'd bring this up now rather than Monday night so we can, uh, just don't take up so much time. But, um, I would really like some, some things clarified, uh, when it comes to broadband. So, uh, again, um, we had a meeting, I, I, I believe, I guess it was a presentation from SCED um, that, um, Counselor Flores, I think, was, uh, really in favor of as well as, um, Counselor Aliff. And, um, and at that time, uh, apparently it didn't qualify for ARPA funds. Um, in the meantime, the county did hire SCED uh, for broadband consulting. So, um, I think that was thirteen counties or, or it might have been more counties that they're including, which would include the city of Pueblo. So I think we need to see what that contract entails. Um, I did ask, um, Commissioner Ortiz for a copy of that contract. Um, and then on September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one, we had a presentation regarding ITC broadband, broadband holdings, which is currently tapping into Pueblo West. So, uh, we gave them our right of ways to begin to lay fiber optics. It's a two-year deal. They'll be doing that for two years and covering all rural areas. And Pueblo is really rural. I mean, when you compare it to the north. Um, so I'd like to know exactly what ITC is doing, um, exactly what, um, what SCED is doing. Uh, so I guess what I'm asking for is also for co-creates. What I, what I'm asking for is that we pull co-create from that bunch of ARPA approvals so that we can have a, a, maybe a work session so that we know exactly what we're doing. I just don't want to be duplicating services, if that makes sense.
Ms. Solano?
It is a standalone item on the agenda because it is a contract for personal services. So it's not a subrecipient agreement. It's already separated.
Um, would anybody appreciate more information on that? I guess that's what I'm getting before, before it's on the agenda. Or, or I guess I would have to table, ask to table that Monday night rather than now. So.
Counselor Flores?
Uh, as I recollect, the SCED proposal was basically asking us to fund, I think, a position. And it's also, SCED also is responsible. They're looking at this comprehensively over the southwest of Colorado. It just didn't seem to me that it was the right program for us to be involved in. Co-create is completely different. And it, it, it is so important to understand that, and I, I asked both, uh, people that were doing this study to have lunch with me and I had lunch with them. And then no way is co-create what they're trying to do in bringing broadband to areas where cable does not want to be because they know that they cannot get people to sign up. They're not willing to invest the money. The government has recognized that and they're, they're setting out a plan so that we, as city council, can help the less fortunate to be able to, to get, uh, broadband in their homes. Uh, there's, there's just a lot of pockets throughout the city and it was, it was exacerbated by COVID too, where children were using their mother's phone to try to, to try to do their homework. I mean, it, it's really bad. And I think that this, uh, money that's so minimal for them to try to help us get grants to get this thing going. money that's so minimal, well, for them to try to help us get grants to get this thing going is so important to me.
And I think that's the important part too, about moving on it quickly because that money is out there now, and they need to get to work identifying it.
We're gonna left, we're gonna be left behind.
SCED's proposal was, I think, and I'm trying to recollect the numbers now, but I think they wanted three percent of our, our allocation from the city of Pueblo to work on this broadband, uh, structure. ITC, when they first came to the city and wanted to partner with the city, I think it was ITC, correct me if I'm wrong, they wanted thirty-two million dollars from the city to partner with this. Now, it's not costing the city a dime. What's happening with ITC is not costing anything. Things have changed that dramatically in the last eighteen months where, um, and ITC is basically coming through Pueblo to get to Pueblo West. They, we were working on an agreement with them for, um, them to, uh, provide services to low-income areas. That's sort of fallen by the wayside at this point. And Dan, you correct me if I'm wrong, but you're going to be having a work session here pretty quickly on a, uh, where what the rule number is. It's an election, um, that we need to take place for that has to do with broadband or cable services? Yeah, it includes, uh, it, it's basically fiber, um, you know, cable is gonna become a thing of the past, but City of Pueblo has to do an opt-out election. They have to do an opt-out election for certain things to happen in the community, including like for the city to be involved in partnerships with broadband companies, I think. The, the voters have to agree to opt out of a senate bill. And I'm treading on thin ice now because I'm not an expert. I've, and it's been a while since we've had conversations with the lawyers. But Bob Jaggers is working on that. He and I exchanged emails, and I asked him to schedule a work session with the council because this will be the kind of thing that we'll have to bring to you. You'll have to put it on the ballot in August so that the voters get a chance to opt out and so. But I, I agree with Councilor Flores that we need to move, and I think we should do the co-create so that we're not left behind, so that they can start working on these grants that are available to the community as quickly as possible.
Councilor Warner? Okay, that concludes the city updates. So next on the agenda then is Nathan Stern, who's going to talk to us about Holmes Hardware Project. So, Mr. Stern, come on up.
Thank you very much. Um, is it possible to load the presentation? Thank you so much. And, and thank you, Councilor Martinez, for inviting me to share updates. I know that the last substantive updates were prior to any, uh, of you being elected to city councils. I really appreciate the opportunity to, to share some updates for the project and have a discussion to the extent that, that time permits. Um, so, so first I just wanted to share updates on the existing Holmes Hardware building and the campus surrounding it. So, so this is our site plan here. The, the Holmes Hardware Building is, uh, the, where it says existing buildings right on the corner of Union Avenue and B Street. So the renovation is ongoing, a little over fifty percent complete of the, uh, historic building. That has two components. So on the first floor in the basement, we have the Fuel and Iron Food Hall. The update that I wanted to share there is, uh, and, and many of you know this because you've attended, and, and we're very grateful for that. We're having a series of pop-ups every month where we're revealing each of the chefs who are going to be in the food hall. We've had two thus far. They're the third Tuesday of every month. We'll have one in May, June, and July. They're at Bingo Burger, and it's just a great opportunity for the chefs to have a moment to test out their food, receive feedback, and have a conversation with the community. And we're just so excited about the chefs who are going into the project. We have two chefs who have existing concepts and are launching a new concept in the food hall, and three chefs where this will be their first restaurant, and just providing the opportunity for them. They've done everything in the industry. They're now able to open their first concept, and we hope the first of many, and will make a really positive contribution to the food and beverage scene in Pueblo. So really encourage those who haven't attended a pop-up, and, and of course those who have as well, to join us May, June, or July. So please let me know if, if you'd like to do that. Um, on the second and third floor, we have twenty-eight workforce housing units. We're working with the Housing Authority as the manager of those units, and working through now some of the paperwork to get the units ready to be leased, and they'll start the leasing process as soon as we receive our certificate of occupancy, which right now is scheduled for October. And the employees who work at the food hall, either for us, we'll, we'll operate the bar, and/or who work for any of the six independent operators who are leasing the, the kitchens, they'll get first priority for the housing upstairs. So construction is underway. We're having our OAC meeting, construction inspection in person tomorrow. And, uh, we're a little over halfway there. Completion, uh, anticipated in October. So where of course, the, the project has been a long time coming and could not have happened without the contributions made by the city. So we're very excited to bring that to fruition this fall. We've also started the design for the ancillary parcels around the historic building, uh, the parcel to the south, and this is the, the conceptual design here. Uh, we're calling it Fuel Farm. It'll be a one-acre urban farm and greenhouse with the performing arts space under the Union Avenue Bridge, and an event space in the existing metal building to the south of the historic building, which the, the metal building in and of itself is also a historic structure. So we received a generous support from Palmer Land Conservancy to fund the design and also to fund the, a consultant to advise us on a nonprofit will eventually operate the farm. So that process is ongoing and expect the design to be completed this fall. And then on the other parcel, this is a parcel to the east of the Main Street Bridge. Uh, we're working with Indie dwell on twenty-four additional workforce housing units. This is a, a rendering of what the units will look like, and this is a, a site plan. We're trying to be as efficient as possible with Indie dwell and a number of boxes that we use so that they can operate their factory at full efficiency. Um, so working on funding for that, exploring a number of different options because as with these projects always, there's a gap, so we have to get creative. And hoping to be able to bring that to the Division of Housing, who, they were a big funder for the first phase in the historic building. We expect them to also be our big funder in the second phase. They, they want to see the first phase stabilized before we bring the second phase to State Housing Board. So assuming stabilization happens around the end of the year, we hope to bring a request to State Housing Board early next year for the additional workforce housing. Um, and then also just wanted to share a few other projects that are happening outside of the historic building. Th- this one you all are familiar with because we just spoke about it last Monday, but, uh, we're working on a childcare center in the Riverwalk, and then happy if there are any additional questions there to answer them. I, I feel like we, we covered those uh, at length during the presentation, and thank you all for asking such excellent questions, um, during that presentation. And then the last, uh, two projects that I want to discuss, uh, this one is called Fuel Kitchens. So the idea here is to be an incubator for entrepreneurs who want to launch packaged food products businesses in the same way that the Fuel and Iron Food Hall will be an incubator for entrepreneurs who want to launch restaurants. And so we took over Colorado Cold and Dry Storage at seventeen forty-five North Erie Avenue, March first. And we're, this is the existing, whoops, sorry, this is the existing footprint as it looks today. And if you look in the top right corner, there's some office space. That's where we want to create the actual commissary kitchen. The building already has a huge walk-in freezer, a huge walk-in cooler, and, uh, dry storage with warehouse racking, so it has all the other components for this type of business model except for the kitchen itself. So we feel very fortunate about that. And here's our conceptual design for the kitchen. The idea is a, a big open kitchen that entrepreneurs can come, get a, a work table, take the equipment that they need, and they'll have a rack of cold, refrigerated, frozen, and dry storage, and, and some shared office space that they can use for their business as well. So we're working on the design there. We hope to be under construction first quarter of next year on Fuel Kitchen. So if anybody is entrepreneurs who are looking to open, uh, packaged products businesses or other food businesses that aren't restaurants, like food trucks who need prep space, caterers who need prep space, someone who wants to sell at Farmer's Market, he needs prep space. We hope that this will be a great option for them because a lot of entrepreneurs right now, they're making food in their home under the cottage food law. They don't have the money to open their own facility, and they're just kind of stuck. And so we hope to be a solution for that middle ground to the point where they're ready to open their own facility. Um, and then the last project that I want to share is the only one that's actually open, and, and this is the one that's in Denver. So we're, we're doing this backwards, but thank you for, for bearing with us on that. And thank you for Councilor Maestry for coming up for our grand, grand opening. Really, really appreciate you making the journey. And we had a Pueblo delegation of twenty-five Elise. That, that's who came with the Chamber of Commerce. Others came independently from Pueblo, so really, really appreciate that. And we hope that if any of you are in Denver doing business and looking for a place that reflects your community, you'll hold meetings at the bar, and then hopefully that'll generate additional interest in Pueblo. That can then lead to a second meeting in Pueblo. We also hope for people who are uninitiated to how incredible Pueblo is, they'll go to the bar, they'll learn about Pueblo, and they'll be more incentivized to come down and, and visit Pueblo on their next vacation. And also for people who grew up here, spent significant time in Pueblo, but now live in Denver, we hope that there's a place that they can call home within Denver. And, and we've received a great outpouring of support from people within the Pueblo, you know, expat quote-unquote community who are living in Denver, and we're creating an advisory board of Denver residents, Pueblo natives, to help guide us on having offerings that are really relevant and, and appropriate, and, and really accentuate the Pueblo community in the way we want to. So please let me know if any of you are coming up to Denver. Would love to give you a tour of the bar, and, and thank you again, Councilor Maestry for, for already making the trip. And so just, uh, we're, we're excited at the, uh, progress that we've made since we, we've last talked, and just really appreciate the continuing support from the city because none of this would be possible without you. So I will, and here's some pictures from, uh, our, our grand opening ribbon cutting. Uh, we have an incredible team at the bar also, so you'll be just well taken care of in general. And then, uh, here's a, a view, a mural by Dan Levinson, who did the Bin Man mural on the side of Do Drop In. Really happy to, to have that as part of the space as well. Um, so with that, I'll, I'll open the floor to any questions or discussion.
Thank you so much, Mr. Stern. You've certainly been busy. Um, what questions are there from council? Councilor Flores?
What's the timetable on the residential spots at the Holmes Hardware? When do you think you'll have those finished?
So we, we hope to deliver those in October. And, you know, I, I would always take that with a grain of salt, only because initially it was July, so it's, it's been delayed. So I, you know, I, I hope we'll hit our construction schedule. It may get pushed back a little more, but at this point, the schedule says we'll deliver those in October.
And then on the employees that will be working in the, uh, the, the various restaurants, these individuals are really serious about going into their own business after they get their feet wet in your place, and you basically are going to nurture their business and provide them with, uh, consulting, and then eventually they'll move out. Are these the individuals that you're talking about that will get first serve on the, the units upstairs? Or is that a different set of employees?
So that, that is the employees. The only distinction that I would make, Councilor Flores, is the, the owners of the restaurants within the food hall are likely the ones who will then leave the food hall and launch their own concepts. We hope that they're developing a great team, and their employees will come with them. We hope if we're doing our jobs right, the owners of the restaurants will be making enough money that they won't qualify for the units because they're all income qualified. So it'll most likely be the entry-level employees who will qualify for the housing because of the income limits. But, but it's possible that, you know, depending on the income of the restaurant owners themselves, they could qualify for the housing.
And the metal building, unfamiliar with that building, what are you going to do inside that building?
We want to turn that building into both a, a classroom and community room during the day, and an event space during the evening. And because of some rules with historic tax credits, we can't actually submit our design, our proposed design for that building until a year after construction is completed on the first phase. And so we might, you know, we, we have some ideas of creating a lot of facade on the south side of the building to let more natural light in. We hope we'll be able to do that because it's not as significant of a structure as the Holmes Hardware Building. But the National Park Service could say, no, sorry, you have to maintain more of the historic design. So that might alter the programming when we actually submit our design, but at this point, the goal is classroom, community room, event space within that building, and building a patio to the south of the building so that it creates some indoor/outdoor space. Thank you.
Councilor Warner?
Um, I was a little lost with the Indie dwell. Can you backtrack on that? What, what are you doing? What were you saying about Indie, Indie dwell?
Sure, and, and I'm sorry, I really, uh, I, I really raced through that. Would you mind putting the presentation back up? Would that be possible? Um, so I'm sorry, I'm going all, all the way to the back, the beginning for a second. Do you see in the bottom, uh, right corner there, Councilor Warner, that, uh, parcel to the east of the Main Street Bridge where it says Phase Two Multi-Family Housing? So right now, that's just, uh, dirt. There's nothing on that parcel. So what we're hoping to do is to build a twenty-four unit house, multifamily project, but using the Indie dwell modules for the housing units. Yeah, and, you know, we hope that it'll be their biggest, well, I mean, you know, of course, we hope down the road, there's a bigger project, but for now, it would be their biggest project within Pueblo. So we hope they have a lot of people coming and taking their factory tours. But then you can't see their multifamily product yet anywhere within the community on, on this sort of scale. So we hope that once it's complete, people can take the factory tour and then come over to our site and really see it out in the world, and that just gives an additional perspective of the capabilities of Indie dwell. Because what they can do is really phenomenal, and it's been great building a relationship with them. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? You know, Nathan, um, as a young adult, I am so incredibly excited about the food hall. I'm already hyping up my peers who live, do not live in Pueblo, so that way they can come and visit this. And I'm so excited to even have Pueblo represented, um, at the, the Denver level. I, so, I'm so grateful. So thank you so much. What needs right now, or what, um, things would you need city help with right now?
So the, well, okay, so I've, I've one that's a little bit esoteric, and then the, the one I want to say that, that's of, of greater significance is, you know, we do have an ARPA request into the city. I know that it's be- because of the, the timing of the second tranche of ARPA funding and the opening of our, of the food hall, it's been moved to the second part. That'll fund some of the pre-opening improvements at the food hall, you know, furniture, fixtures, equipment. And so, you know, of, of course, would, would love council's consideration of that request. The, the more esoteric thing is, if, if I could get a City of Pueblo flag, and if it'd be appropriate to fly that in the Denver bar, I would love to do that. So that, that's, uh, you know, on a, a smaller scale, that would be really cool.
Can we make that happen?
I think the flag's a possibility.
Okay, so I'm going to follow up with the mayor about that. Thanks, Nathan.
Thank you so much.
Final, um, questions or thoughts from council? Great. Thanks, Nathan.
Thank you. Really appreciate it.
Um, so then our next agenda item is, um, from Mr. Freeman around the Pueblo Code of Ethics. So if you can come to the podium, Mr. Freeman?
Well, I finally got here. City council, I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you, not tonight. And it's about the possibility of a new code of ethics, and why we need a new code of ethics. Okay, so let's start with the presentation. It's a PowerPoint. Okay, now with reference to, with a, we had a, a Code of Ethics Task Force, which we started back in twenty thirteen. It's been over eighteen months of working on the co, a new code of ethics. We used Centennial's Code of Ethics as a guideline. The reason for that is we looked at a number of municipalities and, uh, found that their Code of Ethics was the most up-to-date, the most comprehensive, and easy to understand. So, I mean, we're looking at maybe the possibility of using theirs with some modification. We've also, at that particular time, talked to other stakeholders such as the Fire Department, Police Department, and city, uh, unions. Next. Why is a new code of ethics needed? Next. Number one, why do we need the Code of Ethics and so forth? The Code of Ethics is, have many government agencies, private companies, public companies, and so forth have those. And the purpose of it is so that the, uh, public servants do understand And the purpose of it is so that the, uh, public servants do understand the difference between right and wrong and applying that understanding to their decisions. And we just talked about some of those issues. As I said, the, the availability, the avail- avail- the availability of the code. If you talk to some of the employees today at the city and ask them about a Code of Ethics, they're probably gonna say, what are you talking about? Because they know nothing about the Code of Ethics. So therefore, what we're talking about is the possibility of being able to spend a little time with maybe departments and so forth to update all those employees of the city so that they're aware of the city of Code of, of Code of Ethics. That's the only way it could work. So it's the same, it's a specialty that there's a standard for everybody in the city. Okay? All right, next. Why replace the existing Code of Ethics? Go ahead. Number one, the new code is better to understand. Defines processing for submitting complaints or allegations. This has been an issue and what we're just discussing is, is the fact that a complaint or allegation needs to be submitted in writing with all the details about who's making the allegations and their contacts, witnesses and so forth. It also defines procedures for investigating complaints and allegations, which we don't have in the existing code. Establishing consequences, which is not in the present codes. Especially for those that violate the code, the standard codes that would be, uh, implemented. Also, the code that we're representing, hopefully, is at the, uh, Centennial's Code also protects both the, the complainant and the person that's been complained against. So there's, uh, obviously a person's rights are protected. Next. Code of Ethics applies to all public servants of the city. City council, appointed members, appointed people by the council, people that are, uh, appointed by the mayor. Now, here they talked about, this goes back a ways. They talk about the city manager. That city manager no longer exists in Pueblo, but there's an equivalent to that. And that's, that person would also fall under the city council, like the, uh, Code of Ethics. The same way with officials appointed by the city manager. That's, they're either appointed by the mayor and approved by the city council for both commissions, uh, task forces and so forth. It also would apply to all full-time employees and part-time employees. Also, also to all members of boards, commissions, task forces and summer bodies. Next. Mandatory standards of ethical conduct. The proposed ethics, when I would say proposed, I'm talking about Centennial's Code of Ethics, which I hope you all took a look at, because I gave you copies of it. It explains a reasonable standard of ethical conduct for public servants. If they're, if they're to abide these standards is a violation of the Code of Ethics that would be implemented. Public servants cannot adhere into the, may be subject to investigation, review and hearing process. These are always all formally defined. And violations are bound to exist, appropriate consequences and, and penalty will be administered. It can just be a little letter or a submitt- a determination depending on how to, uh, what, what the violation is. Next. Submitting a complaint or allegation. Complaint has to be done in writing to the city. Always, and I said here, the city clerk. The city clerk could be involved as the mayor and the, and the city attorney. The complaint must identify themselves, including detailed information. Otherwise, you can't put down here as somebody that's just throwing in a, in a complaint and not saying who they are. Full description of the facts, that's what I was just talking about. And they, they need to identify the, and the section and paragraph alleged to be violated. So it will be very, very clear as to what's going on. Name and contact of witnesses, same thing. It must be part of the submittal of your allegations or complaint. Initial processing of a complaint. Determine as jurisdiction. Because depending on what the, so the violation of the code is, it could go to different places and that will be discussed a little bit. Dismissal of the complaint if it's found to be frivolous, groundless or for harassment. Now, if a complaint is found to be frivolous and so forth, the people said, indicated that it is, uh, frivolous must write a letter to the person that had submitted the complaint and saying why it was considered frivolous. Otherwise, you can't just go into the garbage can. So the facts of the allegations appear to be sufficient to constitute a violation of the Code of Ethics. The Board of Ethics. This is where the city council comes in here. You were just talking about a problem with, and where things have changed a little bit. This clearly defines the hierarchy of who to see and who's to be investigated and so forth. So here's where, where it goes to the, to the, uh, to the Board of Ethics. They look at the assignment to the Ethics Subcommittee, which will be defined, assignment to investigation, informal administration review and formal hearing. These are all clearly defined. And this is where the city council comes in here. You would gain a little bit more power back where it belongs. Next. Code of Ethics hierarchy. The Board of Ethics, which I just just had mentioned, okay, would be the city council. Subs- a committee, sub, subcommittee would comprise of one city council and a couple city representatives. And all these, the case manager, that gets up to where there's a formal, uh, review and hearing. Hearing body, an odd number of people, but basically almost act as the jury. And it falls under a complete formal review and investigation. And so next, please. So in conclusion, okay, the Code of Ethics Task Force, which, which there was about 15 people in the city, leaves that the acceptance of the Code of Ethics as we're, I presented, because I did present a Code of Ethics back in 2014. Uh, but considering, uh, the Centennial's Code with some modifications, would create an environment of trust between the public servants and the cities, citizens of Pueblo. And that's the key to this whole thing. Have confidence, trust between all city employees and public servants. Now, one of the things I wanted to mention before I turned over questions, we spent over half an hour on conflicts of interest and recusing yourselves. The Code of Ethics I'm talking about from Centennial has that extremely clearly defined. And I, and I asked all, have you actually took, take a look at it? The Code of Ethics that I gave to you? Take a look at what it talks about. And when they talk about, it talks about a broad family, extended family. When it comes to a recusing yourself, recusing yourself is strictly up to you. So it may go out to a second cousin. And if you don't know that second cousin, you don't have a conflict of interest. So you don't have to recuse yourself. But now if it's right up front and it's, it's an uncle that you know pretty well and he's maybe works for a contractor, high up, yes, a second, and you're gonna be voting on that, you better recuse yourself because that's your responsibility. So I hope you didn't waste a whole half hour talking about what is, that we need to really take a look at Centennial's Code of Ethics. I have a good contact and I've talked to him many times. Bob. Oh, I'm getting old, my memory's gone. Anyhow, the city manager of Centennial, city, that individual is the author of Centennial's Code of Ethics. He's taught Code of Ethics and he has his own, uh, law firm which specializes in municipals, municipalities, period. And he's indicated that he'd be willing and, and to work with the City of Pueblo and the City Council to see about using an updated Centennial Code of Ethics for Pueblo. Now, I'm over with the questions now.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman, for that presentation. What questions are there from council? Councilor Martinez Ortega.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Ted, thank you for, um, bringing this to, bringing this new Centennial updated version of the Code of Ethics to our attention. You know, I did read it word for word, but I didn't retain a whole lot of it. And like, my eyes just start glazing over once I read some of that stuff. Um, but you're 100% right about, um, where they, we'd be able to mitigate a lot of this, um, going back and forth. And of working in a lot of these gray areas if we do, um, if we do adopt something like this, because then, um, the process just has to be laid out uh, in black and white, so then we know how to proceed from there.
Well, the way I look at it, if you legislate a new law and you don't have any way of enforcing that law, what good is that law? Same way with the Code of Ethics. You can have a Code of Ethics, but if you don't have a way of enforcing it, what good is that Code of Ethics?
I agree, and community members, um, is, is a good way to build that trust between local city government and the community.
That's, that's absolutely necessary to have that confidence and trust.
I agree. Thank you, Mr. Freeman.
Other, uh, Councilor Warner.
So you were including city employees, correct?
Excuse me?
You were including employees as well, city employees? In this?
Absolutely.
Um.
All part-time, full-time, members of, of commissions and
Right, right, right. But there's a, there's a, an employee handbook with the city that's, um, clearly states, um, what is expected as far as behavior. So I don't see why, I mean, the, the, the HR department generally, if there's an issue, there's an investigation. Um, sometimes they hire in somebody to investigate. So I don't think that we have any business in that. I mean, that's, that's handled.
When did that come out?
Uh, it's been, it's been there forever. It's the employee handbook.
I don't think so. Number one, I don't believe if you look at it closely, that it says anything about formal hearings.
About what?
If there's, if there's consequences, if, if, if the codes are not followed.
But those are, those are HR issues. They're not, I mean, that, they shouldn't be looked at by, uh, a committee with citizens.
Well, a Code of Ethics necessarily is, is not, has nothing to do with civil law, things of that nature. What it is, is, is to follow, basically as I said upfront, it's knowing the right or wrong when making a decision and people watching you making those decisions. So the Human Resources Department has nothing to do with Codes of Ethics. You know, they have to do primarily with civil situations.
Uh, I, I disagree. Um, but also, uh, I was trying to look up on my phone here how many employees City of Centennial has now. Um, it's my understanding that they contract just about everything. So, um, back the last time I looked at the city as Centennial, they had maybe 30 employees.
Well, as you, as I pointed, as you pointed out, uh, the city attorney is under contract to the Centennial.
Right.
But it's still the Code of Ethics. If they're under contract, typically they still, if you look at it, they still have to meet a Code of Ethics because that's what contractors also require, they're also required to follow.
Thank you, Ted.
Thank you.
Councilor Flores.
Uh, have you had a chance, uh, since you were involved initially, uh, in the original, uh, commission or committee back in 2013? Have you had a chance to contrast what we have in place now? Uh, and where you wanna go with that? I mean, has there been some, some connect, uh, comparison where you think that certain things need to be changed? Uh, have you done that? Because this is, you know, we do have, uh, standards of, uh, under section two, 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 one, we, we have a whole section on Code of Ethics. And, uh, as one example, uh, when, when a police officer takes his oath, uh, their standards and their Code of Ethic as their employees of the city, but their Code of Ethics is much more expansive because of what they do. Uh, in, in investigating crimes and all that other stuff.
Theirs, theirs is considered a code of conduct.
Yes, uh, well.
Not a Code of Ethics.
Right, but it falls in our-
There's a major difference.
Uh, in our charter, it does fall in there, one of the sections under Code of Ethics, but they just pointed out. But at, at some point for us to look at these changes, we really need someone to dig deep as to why you think maybe there's a shortcoming now and that somehow we need to change what we have. Uh, because you were part of the authorship of that.
This is where Bob Wiener comes in.
Pardon me?
This is where Bob Wiener comes in, the, uh, Centennial, uh, city attorney. And he's the author of, of this Code of Ethics I'm referring to, Code of Centennial. As I say, he's also taught- As I say, he's also taught ethics classes. And so he, and he's worked on several other municipalities' Code of Ethics. So if we can, he's indicated he was more than willing to come down and work with the City Council and saying, hey. What would you, I mean, go over in detail, he would say what's, what's not necessary. But as an example, as I said, you know, there was a big, big conflict about this broad, very broad definition of. Households and neighbors and so forth, you know, when there's a conflict of interest. There's a reason for that, as I said, when there's a conflict of interest. If it goes back to a third cousin and you're very knowledgeable about that third cousin. You should recuse yourself. That's, as I say, that's spelled out, you know, you don't recuse yourself unless, you know, there's a direct connection. And there's, in that particular section, these are examples of what could be considered conflicts of interest. Not just say, hey, if you have a conflict of interest, there's things to look at that would help. The employees of the city to understand what their standards are for Code of Ethics.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from council? Seeing none, Mr. Freeman, thank you so much for your time. We do have our last presentation from Ms. Wilson on the vacant property registration.
Good evening. Thanks for inviting me here tonight. So I'm just going to give an update on the vacant property registry so far. We started this process back in September of 2021. We were given a list of about twenty-six hundred properties. That list was compiled from utility records, post office records, code enforcement records, and things like that. They were based on shut offs, condemnations, or things that the post office had marked as vacant. So we sent out twenty-six hundred letters just telling people this is a new ordinance that's happening. And the payment would be due in January of 2022 for having, for having a vacant property. As a result of that letter, fifteen hundred homes were reported as occupied from that list. We sent out those letters, a lot of people called. In fact, our phones were, our phone lines were tied up and busy for about two weeks answering phones in regard to this, this registry. A lot of people went ahead and registered, but a lot of those homes were reported as in use. We tried to make this as simple as we possibly could because we knew this list was probably flawed. It just came from so many different sources and don't know a timeline of when those records were searched or things like that. So we knew it was probably pretty flawed and we had a lot of cleanup to do. So we made it as easy as possible for that citizen to report that the home was occupied. And pretty much if they called us and said it was occupied, we removed it from our list. To date, we've seen one hundred and eighty-six permits for repair as a result of those letters. Forty-nine of them have been sold. We've, we handled twenty-two appeals, there were only thirteen hearings. We implemented an appeal process in regard to that vacant property. So if someone didn't agree with, with what we told them or something, they had a, they had a due process they could follow. So part of that was, they would send a letter to us, it would be sent to the mayor's office. We would investigate that property the best we could to determine if it was vacant or not. If, after we sent a report to the mayor's office, if they felt that it was not vacant, then they would remove it at that point. But if it was still in question, then, or if it was still a disagreement, then it would go to municipal court for a hearing, whether it was vacant or not. That would be the appeal hearing. So that's, we followed that, and there were nine that were deemed not vacant as a part of, a part, a whole part of that process. Hundred and thirty-six have registered to date. We've taken a couple more registries just over the last couple of days, Friday and today. So that number continues to increase. In January, we started, we started over. We knew we sent out warning letters to everyone. But because part of this process involves putting a lien on the property, we felt it was important to follow our legal process in regard to any violation, any other violation. So we sent out nine hundred and twenty-six notices of violation. Those were sent by first-class mail, certified mail, and they were posted on each property. So since that time, we've removed five hundred and forty more. Some of those we saw that weren't vacant, we knocked on doors, we did a whole bunch of stuff. We had thankfully volunteers that helped handle that process. Could we, I don't think we could have done it without them. Now we're to the next phase, everyone has had at least thirty days or more to let us know the property is not vacant or to pay the fee. And we're starting our process now to, to implement the liens on those properties that haven't, have not registered. Three hundred and eighty-six property owners have yet to respond to warning letters or notices. And I forgot to tell you too, that vacant parcels with no improvements, no structures on them were not included, or are not included in this ordinance. A lot of them did receive letters, and that's a lot of them that were removed from that list as well. So moving forward, properties that have failed to respond to the letters and notices of violation. We'll start sending out people to inspect those, and then we'll start the process. We add the late fee and then we'll add a lien to those properties. Once we put the lien on, it goes to our finance department where the lien will be recorded with, with the county assessor. The list that was compiled was kind of a one-time thing, we had to have a starting point. We did not have any other record or list of just vacant properties, so that was a starting point only. From this point forward, those properties will be identified usually by code enforcement or police or fire when they're out on those calls. And at that point, I'll be notified that there's a vacancy and we can start that process with that property. Again, there will still be a, an appeal process, late fees and liens, and no, no liens have been filed yet. That's a process that we're just beginning to do now. Pretty proud of my staff, with one part-time person, we were able to get all of this done by this month. We just got our full-time person hired, so hopefully that person will be dedicated solely to that, and hopefully that'll start moving a whole lot quicker. And with that, that's all I've got, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thanks, Ms. Wilson. What questions are there from council? Counselor Martinez Ortega.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Wilson, I am one of the folks who had called about the vacant properties. Somebody had reached out to me and your office was really, I think it took about forty-two business minutes. For you to get the whole thing cleared up, and so I really appreciate that. That's all, that's all I got.
Thank you.
You run a tight ship. Good job.
Counselor Flores.
I, I noticed that you didn't mention any homes that may have been raised or demolished during this process. And I know, I know that we had one, we had one individual that had about eight homes, and I noticed that they've all come down. And just wondering if you've seen more than that.
I really haven't seen too many of the demolitions. All we know, all that we were reported was that permits were pulled. So that could have been a demo permit or a, or a fix-it permit, I don't know.
So basically, we're down to three hundred and eighty-six properties that we've identified down from twenty-six hundred. And that's, that's an amazing amount of, you know, properties that you've gone through. And it's now looks more manageable, I guess.
Right, well, we also have the hundred, I think it was thirty-six that have, that have already registered as well.
Thank you for that report.
Thank you.
Counselor Winner.
Hi Karen, thanks. Hey, I actually wrote down here, how many of the hundred and thirty-six properties that you had payments on? How many of those are problem properties?
I can't answer that question right off the bat, I'd have to do some research on each of those addresses.
Okay, thanks.
Karen, how many will qualify for liens right now? I know that you're just starting that process, but how many of those properties would qualify for that?
I think that we are running pretty darn close to three hundred. Because we've already had eyes on the properties, on all of them at some point when we posted them. We still have a few phone calls trickling in, and we're trying to give people ample time to take care of that. But those that we started issuing in January, most of those will definitely have liens at this point.
And as I know that with the new Pueblo Place and Open Gov system, I'm wondering if, is there a way on there to report, hey, this property looks vacant? Or how do people go about that?
Sure, they can report it through that venue, they would just do a code enforcement complaint. All of our vacant property records are also on Open Gov. That's part of what's taken so long to do that is to get the actual vacant properties entered into that. Any notices that we sent were entered into that system for better tracking.
Counselor Flores.
I did have another question, had to do with absentee landlords. And, and I know sometimes. We don't get their mailing address all the time. I mean, you probably sent notices to the house that they own, they might live in California. Have you identified, you know, how many of those?
We haven't.
We have.
Yeah.
Are absentee owners.
I'm not sure we've identified the exact number of absentee owners, but part of that registration process is to give us that contact information and to give us a local contact. During that phone call process, we have that master spreadsheet that we started with. And we did obtain a lot of contact information just through phone calls.
Because it might be instructive, I mean, you hear that rumor all the time that we've got a lot of individuals that own property and just don't care. And they live in another state, it's almost to the point of abandonment, but it'd be nice somewhere down the line. And I, I know you're in the middle of the process, but it might be nice to know how many of the vacant properties are really owned by people that don't live here.
Yeah, I think once we get deeper into it, we'll be, we'll be able to pull out a lot more information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Karen? No, well, thank you so much for what you do and what your team does.
Thank you.
Even my interactions with code enforcement have been similar to Counselor Martinez Ortega, have been taken care of like that, so I really appreciate it. Thank you. All right, any other business for the good of the order?
I do want to just mention that I, I'm going to look into, continue to look into Mr. Freeman's Code of Ethics. I don't want you to walk away feeling like we didn't hear you. And then maybe we could possibly talk to the city attorney over there at Centennial and, and have that comparison. But also, Ted, please come to us with those shortcomings like Counselor Flores was, was asking for.
Any other comments? Seeing none, it is seven fourteen, and I conclude this work session.